Along the news journal, we'd like to welcome everyone to a 2015 city council candidate forum for District Five. So, we did our coin toss and Ben won the coin toss and deferred today for the opening remarks. So, we'll start off with David in open remarks.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's nice to see that we don't have any umbrellas out here tonight. It's kind of a change. Now, let me tell you what got me interested in running for the city council. Back in the early 2000s, some of my friends came to me and said, "Why don't you consider running for the city council?" Well, at the time, we had way too much stuff going on. Our kids were young, they were playing sports and athletics and that kind of thing. Plus, there was a pretty strong candidate running at the time. His name was J. Dean. So, anyway, I didn't want, never even considered running at that time, but it kind of made me start thinking about it. And so, over the years, I thought a little bit more about it. And in the early 2000s, my wife started running or ran for the city, or the student, the school board, and she's a trustee on the school board now. And one of the things I saw in between running a business and taking kids to athletics was the amount of time she had to put into being on the school board to do the job that she needed to do. She did a great job on the school board, and to do that, she had to put a lot of time into that. And I just wasn't ready to put that much time into something like the city council. So, over the last, and then as we moved along, I was still interested in the possibility of running for the board, but again, we had some other strong candidates. And I purchased 100% of our business, so I thought, you know, that's not a very good time to be doing that. So, here just recently, my son came to work for me, and he's doing a lot of the, he's doing a lot of the work. He's given me plenty of time to get out and do some things. And so, I thought this was a good time, an ideal time to get out and run for the city council. I've got, you know, a lot of experience from running a business. We're doing a lot of budgeting and forward planning. And one of the things that's kind of, that's tough right now, I guess you could say, with the oil business the way it is, with the oil prices going down, we're having to deal with, a lot of our steel goes into the oil field, we're having to deal with that situation, that business is dropping, and we're having to find up other revenue streams. And I can see in the future that the city may come up with the same issues in the next year or two because of the way the oil prices are going. Anyway, I appreciate you being here and be talking to you some more.
Why am I decided, why have I decided to run? Well, I was born and raised here. I'd long used home for me, and now's the time and a wonderful opportunity to serve. I have young kids, five and seven, one who's in Spring Hill and one who'll be starting there. And this was a chance for me to demonstrate to them how to give back to the place that you call home and the place that you think of so fondly. This is a good opportunity and a good time in our life. We have a full schedule, but it's one that allows for the public service. My wife is on a few different boards here in the city. Couple of years ago, three years ago, I started in city service, sitting on the tax increment reinvestment, tax zone, tax increment reinvestment zone board, which I thought was a weird name when they told me what committee I was going to be on. I think it's a weird name now, but I, that was kind of my first role. I moved from that board to the construction advisory and appeals board, which had a lot more activity. There was a whole lot more just issues that needed to be met on and decided upon, so it was a place to get my feet a little bit more wet with the city. As far as qualifications for the job, do have a rich education provided mainly by LaTerna University here in town. I've received a master's in business administration through them. And that practical education experience has been met with on-job experience. I've worked for a couple of different corporations and currently serve as director of operations for Pathway Church. That is a job that when I started, it was 115 people, and now we're pushing the envelope to 700. And every system strategy and everything that goes along with that is something that I helped oversee and create and currently monitor today. So, it's a wonderful place to work. It's been a very, very, you know, enriching environment. So, what I want to do and what I hope to see in District Five is if I get the chance to serve them, is we have a great comprehensive plan that we need to promote and push on the city of Longview. They want it, now we just need to figure out how to execute the plan. That will, that's our future. That's going to require smart economic development because, as we all know, we're moving into what can be some financially restrictive times. So, we need to figure out how to do that intelligently. For District Five specifically, I'd like to see more infrastructure there, more businesses. And I think with the George Ritchie extension and some of the zoning permissions that will be created throughout the comprehensive plan, I think we can get that to be a little, a much better business hub for the city of Longview. So, that's it. Thank you all for being here, listening.
Mr. Shelton, the first question is yours. Do you think the city is on the right track? Is your own district on the right track? If not, why?
Speaking to the city overall first, I absolutely think that we're on the right track. We have and have been for quite some time. We have had the fortune of having a council that's been very progressive and working together, working through differences that they have in a very, very respectful and intelligent manner. That's not always been the case. So, it is, the council that we have right now, I think, represents our city very well as is evidenced by the approval of the comprehensive plan and all of the provisions allowed inside of that. Regarding District Five, we have a lot going well for us there. We are attracting new business. The George Ritchie extension is huge for us, and there's, but there's a ton of potential there. We have tons of places that we can develop new businesses, and that is happening, new things are happening there. But we need to stay on the right track. And with the amount of council turnover that we're going to be seeing in this election, it's important that we work together to keep the positive track that we're on. One of the things that I think the city overall needs in District Five is not exempt from that, is just an increased amount of public safety, a better sense of awareness, just a general sense of security and reassurance to all that live there.
Mr. Wright?
Well, I think, starting with the city, I think the city has been, has kind of had a uneven performance. The comprehensive plan has been wonderful. There's something that needs to be done. In my business, we have to do a lot of long-term planning. The city is a big business, $160 million a year business right now. They need to have a good plan so that we know where roads are going, where parks are going to go. We need to be estimating how many, what our population's going to be like so we can have enough police, we can have enough firemen. So, that's been a big plus for the city. The negative that I see right now is public safety. We are, what, the 13th most crime in the nation for a city, our size, or I guess for the city. I think the mayor and his task force are on the right track with community policing, with looking at taking care of some of the older burnt-out buildings and the rundown buildings where they've become drug houses. And then, getting the citizens involved is real important. But, you know, we didn't just wake up January 1st and all of a sudden have a crime wave. That's been building. We're down 13 to 18 police, depending on who's counting. If we can get those police hired and retained and get them out on the streets, then that should help with our crime. And as far as District Five, I'm out of time, I think. But District Five is doing real well. We've got a great new superintendent in our school, we've got the George Ritchie extension. So, there's a lot of positives going on in District Five right now.
You stole your own thunder on the next question. Pilot crowd has been in the headlines with a disturbing increase in the shootings in Longview this year in last. Our city's rate of violent crime now exceeds that of much bigger cities in Texas. Please answer two questions. Do you see this as a localized issue for the neighborhood's hardest hit or a citywide issue? Either way, what needs to be done about it?
Well, as I said, I think the mayor and his task force are on the right track. We stepped up community policing. I was out, I rode with the police last week, and there was a shots fired incident. And one of the police that came out, I happened to speak with him and asked him what he was doing, and he said that he was part of the mayor's, or the police, he was a new part of the police that was coming out whenever there were something like, an incident like that, some kind of bodily harm or shots fired or something like that, he would come out to those incidents and investigate them. So, I think we're doing some good things there. We need some better ordinances, some stronger ordinances to get some of these dilapidated buildings torn down. And we need to get the citizens involved and get to where they're not concerned for their well-being if they call in something and tell the city what's going on. But, and also, as I said, we didn't just wake up January 1st and all of a sudden have a crime wave. The police, depending, as I said, who you're speaking with, are down, and we're from 13 to 20 patrolmen. Those patrolmen, we need to get those guys hired, and we need to get, you know, a full amount of people out there serving so we can get the patrolmen out on the street. But it costs a lot of money to train those guys. And then, it also costs a lot of money to equip those guys. So, we need to figure out how to retain them. Our retention of the policemen hasn't been that great. We don't need them leaving after three to five years after we've put all that money into that training and equipment.
So, back to the question, is it a locals issue or a city crime issue?
It's definitely a citywide issue. Crime may be worse in one area, but if we don't do something citywide, as soon as you clamp down on it in one place, it's going to pop up somewhere else. Kind of like a balloon, you squeeze a balloon and it's going to pop out somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Public, public safety and the crime wave that we've been seeing is definitely a citywide issue. It's a citywide issue because we're all citizens of Longview. So, what affects me affects you. What affects someone down the road on 12th Street where there was recently a shooting of, who was a Longview High School football star to stand out, that affects me, that affects you, whether you realize it or not. It is definitely a citywide issue. I do believe that it's actually even broader than that. When I first rode with a Longview police officer when I was 18 years old, I was just fascinated and interested in police work. And you fast forward, a few years later, 35 now, there's just a difference in the public responses towards police officers, those that are out there to protect and serve. And I think a lot of the negative stereotypes that are associated with that have been exacerbated through social media. And it's created an unnatural, unrealistic stigma on police officers. So, one of the things that I think we really need to do in enriching our police force and not only increasing retention and providing a better environment and habitat for the officers to work with them, is to also help try to eliminate the stigma that is on them, that they are truly public servants, that they are out there trying to keep you and I safe. They are not the bad guy, they are the defenders. It's a citywide problem, it's a systemic problem, but it will, can only be cured from the roots going up.
The next question, Mr. Shelton, is yours. In looking at the city budget, do you see any issues that must be addressed? What opportunities do you see?
Budgeting issues, of course, they, starting the budgeting process in May, I think are going to be riddled with questions of what if, what can we afford, what are we going to be able to do, what are we going to be able to sustain? That's why, you know, any leader that we have does need to have business sense, they need to know what it's like to operate on a shoestring budget because the year budget, 160, 165 million, it still comes down to the absolute nickel. So, there are, certainly there's areas that can be improved upon, there are in any budget, but they also need to accommodate the citizens. They're the ones that the money came from in the first place, and we still need to attend to those needs as best we can. So, you have to protect, create a safe environment, but you have to, there's certain elements that you have to have in place with your infrastructure, roads, different things that you have to have just at the grassroots level for the city. And then, you expand and spend your discretionary income in places that best accommodate the needs and requests of the city, of the citizens at large.
Mr. Wright?
Well, I'm certainly not an expert on the city budget yet. A plan I'm being, but I'm not at this time. But, I do know with the budgeting that we have to do as a company, that you have to make plans for what we could, what could possibly be happening in the future. And as I spoke about earlier, with the oil and gas business, with the prices collapsing, I realized we've done a pretty good job of diversifying our industrial base in Longview. Our property taxes, I believe, property tax, only 10% of them come from minerals anymore. But we've got an awful lot of people that work in the oil field, and a lot of them are getting laid off. That's going to diminish the amount of sales tax we have coming into the city. So, I think the city is going to be facing some serious issues in the next one to two years with the amount of money that we have coming in. It's going to be something we're going to have to look at, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions on where to spend money. Right now, public works, police, and city take, I believe, around $90 million, and I don't see being able to cut that very much. Obviously, with police, with the situation with the crime, we're going to need some, the fire department needs more equipment. So, those things are going to really be impacting the budget. So, there's going to be, just like Ben said, there's going to be a lot of discretionary things that we're going to have to cut properties.
Thank you. I hear the next question is yours. The city has formally approved a comprehensive plan and a guide Longview wrote into the future, and the next council's role is to make sure the plan is followed. What would you do as a council member to see the plan executed over the next couple of decades?
I'd like to let Kimberly answer that question. But, you know, the plan, the comprehensive plan is a guide for our future, obviously. It's going to help us figure out where we need to put parks, where we need to put streets, where we need to put a new fire station, a new police substation. It's going to cost a lot of money to do all that kind of stuff, and we're going to have to figure out where the money's going to come from. I think, obviously, I think some of that's going to have to come from bond elections, so we're going to have to set a committee set up to go out and figure out what we want to do first, which of these things in the comprehensive plan do we want to do first. And it's like we had, I think it was the Plan 2010 or something like that, and they came up with, they looked at all the different things the city wanted to do, and then they narrowed that down, and we voted on that bond election and got a lot of, a lot of new streets or streets repaired. So, we're going to have to do things like that. I think planning the zoning, going to have to start looking at that plan and then use that plan to guide what they do when people come to them and want to do different things with subdivisions or something along those lines. So, I think that's kind of the direction I'll be taking if I'm elected.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
First and foremost, I guess, if I'm elected and chase down the comprehensive plan, first thing I'm going to do is tighten this table. I don't think that's a lot, it's not a lot out of the plan, but I'll take care of it personally. Just as David said, this is a roadmap, but it's not one that's set in stone because we don't know all of the factors, all the variables that are going to come into play in the future. We have a good idea of what the short term will look like, and that's a great place to get started. But as we progress down that roadmap, we might come to intersections that need to be rethought, that might need to be renavigated to accommodate the public's preferences. It was a plan that was developed with their input for their benefit, and their input should not stop just because the plan is in place. Depending on how prolonged any type of, I don't want to use the word recession and make everyone get scared, but any type of local economic impact is because of oil slowdowns and what kind of effect that winds up having long-term, could give us an indication of just how many things we may need to rethink. But it is something that the public wants, that I intend to pursue in every way, for every way, shape possible, and, but not something that I want to just classify as written. The public will need continued input.
Mr. Shelton, next question is yours. In the same vein of deciding to build a new animal shelter, our city has worked through one of the most divisive issues in recent history. Now that it's being built, what do you see the city's role in operating the shelter? What do you see as its value and what's next?
You know, admittedly, it was a very hot-licking issue for a lot of people. I'm one, I'm glad the city went forward with it. One of the leading arguments that I picked up in the social media realm and just in talking with a few people was that, well, we still have homeless people. Well, we have a lot of problems, and you can't, you can't exclude the homeless population for the sake of animals, just like you can't exclude the sake of the animal problem for the sake of the homeless population. It's not that animals are equal, but we have a whole lot more homeless animals than we do homeless people, and there's certain threats that stray animals present. Animals are strays long enough, they become disease carriers, they become rabid. That's, you usually don't get bit by a rabid homeless person. That's not something that you see coming across very often. So, the city does have a responsibility to look after that, and I trust that the council's decision on all the information that they receive, information that I didn't personally review, but information that they made the best decisions possible in moving forward with it, they trust that the numbers are going to come together for operation and that they have acted in the best interest of the city overall. And I do believe that they have and will support what it takes to continue to help mitigate the stray animal population in Longview and Grand Haven overall.
Thank you.
Is there any chance that you could have me reread that question?
In deciding to build a new animal shelter, our city has worked through one of the most divisive issues in recent history. Now that it's being built, what do you see as the city's role in operating the shelter? What do you see as its value and what's next?
Well, obviously, it was a divisive issue. There was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about homeless people versus animals, that kind of thing. One thing I would like to see, we're kind of a regional hub for this area. One of the things I would like to see is that we go out and try to bring in, have people or have other counties bring their strays and things here, and then we can possibly charge them a fee to keep their animals here. And so, maybe we could mitigate some of the costs of this thing, because I understand it's about a million and a half dollars a year to run the new animal shelter. So, I would like to see us be able to mitigate those costs some way so that we're the city of Longview's not having to cover all those costs. Obviously, it was something that was needed. I don't think anybody wants to see animals mistreated, or most people don't want to see animals mistreated, and they weren't in the best conditions of the humane society, although I think with what they had, they did a great job. They worked hard to keep those animals well and to treat them well. But we needed a new facility, and now we'll have to sit down next year when the budget comes back up, and we'll have to work on budgeting for the new shelter.
Mayor J. Dean's commission led by Dr. Lutzford on the I-20 corridor concluded that a neglected entryway negatively impacts the image of our city. Would you consider redevelopment of the area as a priority? If so, how should the city proceed to improve this particular front door to Longview?
I don't know that I would consider it a top priority. Right now, we've got, with the crime situation we have, I think that's the top priority, getting that under control and getting our police hired and getting them retained here. But as far as being a priority, we're going to have to take a look at that and see how much money's involved in that, and then we can make decisions on what we can do there. We can't just go out, I don't imagine, and do the whole thing in one big chunk. We'll have to take a look at it through the budgeting process, and I don't know that there wouldn't be some bond issues involved in something like that. So, we'll have to take a look at that and work on it from there.
Is there nothing in the paper that you would like to see happen over?
Oh, on the, it would be nice to see it cleaned up and look a lot prettier, no doubt.
It's certainly something that would have a priority status with me, but it's subject to when can it be addressed funds-wise. One of the things that Mr. Wright did on was increasing the amount of public safety in that area. Some business owners and different things may not feel safe in that area as crime statistics are a little bit higher in that area. So, you'd need to bring that down. The other thing is, people need to be proud of that area. If people had a sense of respect and, excuse me, and sense of pride to go along with that area where their businesses were housed and just kept things in a cleaner state than what you sometimes see, that would go a long way. Bond packages might be in order because it's going to take a lot of money to fix that area up, to overhaul it from what it is to making it a flagship entryway. There's all types of things that I think that we're encountered when our leaders were out doing their tours of different communities for the comprehensive plan, where they were exposed to different types of entryways. Something that's very representative of where we are, including maybe, you know, oil derrick, something steel-wise, you know, something that would be just a structure and entity, something that could be a showcase rather than the eyesore that was. Of course, getting the hotel and defunct gas station cleaned up was a great improvement. But now, something needs to go into place, so we need to encourage something there, and then we encourage the next business and the next business and the next business. And hopefully, the citizens in that area, you know, get on board and have a sense of pride about the area that they live in. And then that would, rather than the systemic issue being one of perhaps more litter, refuse being on the roads, one of community pride would replace itself.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton, the next question. As the news journal recently pointed out, our city this year will see the largest turnover on city council, on city council in decades. The next Longview City Council will be a large mix of newcomers and veterans. As one of the newcomers, what are you doing to prepare for the meeting?
Of course, three years ago, I started studying what it was like to be involved in civil service with the various boards that I've been on. As of late, of course, been going to city council meetings to see what do they like, what's the temperature of the public, how does Mayor Dean conduct himself, what does the input structure look like from the various council members. I've also had the privilege to meet with a few of our council members, Police Chief Dingler, met with Mr. Willard, and other leaders in the community, to figure out what is it like to work and for the city of Longview, and try to get their perspective of their expectations for a council, and what makes their job easier, what makes their job harder. Because I want to go into it as educated as possible and be ready to hit the ground running as soon as possible, and I have to be brought up to speed post-election.
Well, I've already been out talking with several of the department heads from the city. I spoke with Roland McPhee, I spoke with J.K. Steelman, and I want to tell you, those guys are all fantastic people. You go up, they're more than willing to give you their time, they're more than willing to work with you, to bring you up to speed on what's going on in their departments. Been on ride-alongs, been speaking with Roland McPhee. He said that they'll give you tours of all of the different facilities that they have. Go on ride-alongs with the fire department and see what's going on there. So I think we'll be, those are the things I'm doing right now to be ready, kind of be prepared when, if I am elected. I have been going to the city council meetings also to see what all's involved with that. And I expect that whichever one of our mayoral candidates wins the election, they will be having some kind of weekend retreats or something like that, I would imagine, with some of the department heads, to get us up to speed even more. So those are the kind of things I would be looking for, to get us all up to speed.
Okay. Mr. Wright, here's the next question. Our city for decades has been discussing either a public or public-private effort to build a convention or events center to allow Longview to compete with Tyler, Shreveport, and other area cities for more events and conventions. Are you in support of pursuing a convention center that would allow Longview to consider for a small, in size, convention?
I've sat in on some of the meetings where the convention center's been discussed. And I'm not totally convinced that we need a big convention center. We had looked at putting in a more of a fancier, a better arena, where we can draw in some of the horse crowd and that kind of thing, which is pretty popular in this area. It really can draw in some big crowds around here. There are a lot of, I think there are a lot of convention centers that you spoke about, Shreveport and Tyler, and I'm not sure if there's enough business to actually support a big convention center here in Longview. Although, I would be more than willing, if I am on the council, to sit down and look at that, and to, if it can be shown that that's something that would really add to the city, I'd be more than willing to put my support behind it.
So, follow-up question. Are you on board with the South Longview location, or would you consider downtown North Longview?
I have no problem with the South Longview location, being right there by the interstate. That seems like that would be an ideal place for it. But again, whichever, I'd like to see some studies on it to determine which would be the best area for it, but I think the south location would be fine.
Mr. Shelton?
One of the first issues that we actually looked at on the tax increment reinvestment zone board was that exact topic, looking at the need for that, the place for that, the money for that specific interest. One of the target areas is actually the now cleaned up area there, the Estes Parkway entrance off of I-20. While I do think that that would be a good showpiece to have, and something that could offer some benefit to the city, as Mr. Wright pointed out, its need may not exactly be there. I would like to see further studies on it. I know we have poked around a little bit to see about the sustainability of it, and while the economic factors might be in place, what would the, what would a market sample actually look like? What would it look like for real, if we were really going, really going to conduct that type of environment? We do have a couple of larger-scale meeting areas, but not one specifically with hotel accommodations attached. So it would be interesting to see what type of conventions could we bring to the area that we are not already. So while I would be in support of exploring it further, obviously, I would do whatever I could on council to position the city to make a decision on that, whether to act or not, and then, of course, where to put it if they did decide to move forward.
So you believe that it is a good idea for the city, but the town might not be right?
I believe that it could be an idea, if it warrants it. Like, you know, like a lot of things for the city. Wouldn't it be nice if we had something like that? It would be nice if we would use it. It would be nice if there was, if we had a lot of things, you know, in the city, but it all depends on the need. I think one of the things that people are hedging on right now is the need for it, because there's developers out there other than the city of Longview, where if they see a big profit to be made, they would be inclined to move on it. That hasn't happened yet for a reason. Maybe the water isn't quite right for them, and they need, you know, they need something to clear up a little bit, or they need some type of incentive to move forward with development. But if we, if there is a need, then it's something we should move forward on.
Thank you both for answering my questions. Those were great questions submitted by our chamber members and Longview Journal readers. Ready to move to closing statements? Those remarks have been your, your first one, close to three minutes.
Three minutes? The next councilperson for District Five and representative of the city of Longview is going to have the responsibility of transforming the city of Longview of today into the city of Longview of tomorrow. And that's a deep responsibility, and it's one that will require proactivity, intentionality, and commitment. Those are actually the same elements that I joined the District Five race with. I was proactive about when I filed. I was intentional about how I filed, and whom I've been speaking with, and the areas that I've been trying to be plugged into. And there's a degree of commitment that goes along with that, sacrificing the time, working after hours, and giving up weekends to go and meet with the public. Ultimately, I'm seeking to serve, and the council position, it's one of leadership, but you can only lead if you're first to serve. I will bring those same elements of proactivity and intentionality and commitment to the District Five seat.
David?
Mind if I, I have a little short statement that I kind of got together here. Thirty years ago, Karen and I moved away from Longview. Even though I'd only been here for a short time, I felt like Longview was home and hated to leave. For fifteen years, we were gone, and we tried to get back here. Fifteen years ago, we were fortunate enough to have the opportunity to come, come back, and we don't intend to leave again. District Five and Longview are great places to raise a family and watch your children and grandchildren grow. If elected, I will strive to keep it that way for District Five and work to make it like that for all of Longview. I want a city that is business-friendly, so your children don't have to leave Longview. I want a city where people feel safe when they walk down the streets, and I want a city that, due to the planning of our city government and its leaders, is well-positioned to move forward in the next twenty, fifty, a hundred years. And finally, I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight, and thank you for your attention.